Good evening, everyone. We are going to reconvene in open session, and I ask all that are able and willing to stand up and make allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of your God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our first item on our agenda is our employee and volunteer recognition. All right. This is the one of the best parts of this meal. Our first honor goes to our teacher of the month, Lavi Raven. And Lavi is a member of our English faculty, and he also teaches our racial equity class. At last month's board presentation on that class, we got to see firsthand all his passion for teaching and his enormous respect for young people and their insights. He's also been a leader in sharing a view of OPRF with the community. He was one of the first faculty members to join, to jump on board with sharing photos of classroom activities, lessons, and projects. He knows the value of sharing the hashtag #OPRFHSstory with parents and community members, and he's provided so much great content for the district's social media feeds. The colleague who nominated Lavi wrote, "He's also so positive, all the time, so much so that I'm unable to be in a bad mood when he's around. He is the culture of warmth personified and a talented artist of all." So our first award.
Two minutes, move, you want thirty seconds? Just wanted to express gratitude to this space and institution in embracing the open-mindedness of doing this kind of work with our young people. And even though they may not be here, also expressing gratitude to our students. Today, we had our freedom, our third Freedom School training, and it was, there were thirty-five student attendance for faculty. Incredible discussions, and we're coming off of four weeks of students leading units and instruction in the new equity class. It has been very incredible. If you want to come by and see some of the results, artwork and writings in room 311, please do. The reflection on everyone here, I know there's a lot to be discussed tonight, but expressing gratitude to you all and our tenacity towards doing the best we can for our young people. Thank you very much.
Okay, Lavi, I need you to hear those words. Okay, and our next recognition is for our employee of the month, Sharon Martnek. And Sharon is the secretary of one of our People Support Services teams. And she was nominated by three different people, one of whom called her "the best counselor in our office." And this nominator went on to say, "Always ready to help anyone who comes through the door. She has a huge posse of kids who absolutely rely on her and her generous and kind spirit. She makes all kids feel welcome and appreciated. Her laugh, snort is absolutely infectious and makes everyone feel alive and happy in her presence. She goes above and beyond in all the many, many duties required in our busy office, and also finds time to help out other counselors, being social workers, and administering assistance from our other teams who rely upon her for expertise." And last, but maybe the most important tonight, and yet, she banks. So thank you very much, and Sharon, please go. Unfortunately, the two volunteers that we're honoring this month could not be here, but I do want to have us recognize them as well. Magda Piper and Sylvia Zapata Westmeyer. And Magda and Sylvia are the Husky Boosters co-chairs for merchandise sales. And according to Boosters President Fiona Bezarek, this duo has gone above and beyond in all of these. Fiona went on to say, "Not only have we been placing and organizing items for sale, but they have been combing through the fieldhouse and bookstore making changes to make items easier to find. It is not uncommon for them to spend three or four hours per week in this role. They've also put together the new online merchandise store so that Husky fans can have their items shipped directly to them. Without their help, merchandise sales would not happen this year. They are not only performing their task, but are employing the extra model to get back to the school." So thank you to both of them and for all the time.
Ms. Camerton, would you give the status of the four-year report?
Yes, five were received and four are resolved.
Okay, our student council report, Terrell.
Hi. Student councils that have passed a month planning for our charity month, which will be held in April. We haven't decided on the charity we'll be donating our votes to this year, but we do know the fundraiser which we'll be hosting during the month. So we will plan designing flyers to get students to perform at our PAC the Pop Billy fundraiser. We thought this was a great way for students to showcase their talents, but also support really good colleagues and get involved in the school. We're also starting to plan our OPRF pageant, which will be held in April, and all the proceeds will go to charity once again. We're also designing a shirt this year that we're hoping to sell throughout the month of April, which will also donate the proceeds to charity. We've also been focusing on trying to get different activities or competitions into the advisory, since it went over very well during the hallcoming when we did the Jordan decorating competition. We're hoping to do something maybe St. Patrick's Day themed to get students more excited about their budget periods going into the rest of second semester. Freshman night was also a huge success at the end of January. Almost all the clubs and sports were represented with a good turnout of incoming freshmen. It was great to see the current student body supporting their activities and encouraging new members to join. However, it was a little hard to get incoming freshmen engaged at the tables because I know it can be overwhelming, and some students felt that they were interacting more with the parents instead of the students. But it done it with a good night, and we hope that it helped incoming freshmen feel welcomed into the Husky family. In addition, we've been discussing student life during student council and one of the largest topics that we've been talking about was the new comp hosting system. Students are really happy that we are going green and making more steps to help save the planet. However, some people said, who have been involved in the program, said that there needed to be more support in the sorting process, and they hope that more people will want to, or ramp to getting off to a great start. Overall, it's been a great month for student council, and we're excited to continue on our projects and have a great charity month hopefully in April.
Thank you. Congratulations to our most recent students of the quarter, Eva Huber, Sir Landfair, Logan Prodstra, Emily Sanchez, Sidney Honeywell, Yasmin Ruff, Alicia Gaylord, Micah Knolls, William Martin, Abby Howard, and Micah Tate. The National High School Ethics Bowl. Our team is comprised of Astrid Brunk, Anaya Ocasio, Camille Grant, and Emma Kneep. They placed second overall. In poetry news, Jalen Sharp won the sophomore class poetry slam. Senior Juliana Sosa earned a gold medal at the Chicago Scholastic Awards for Poetry, qualifying her for the national level competition. And sophomores Ruby Davis and Junior Caleb Perez earned silver medals. That concludes my announcements.
Put this piece of candy in my mouth for the long time. And now we are at our public comments, and ask you to please limit your public comments to letters that are within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education and to three minutes and a reminder that this is not intended as a dialogue for the board. I apologize for my candy.
Linda Brennan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Linda Brennan, and I have a child in the OPRF tennis program. I'm here representing forty-six families from tennis programs. Now I say representing forty-six families, I am actually about to read is a statement that I sent out to the entire tennis program yesterday morning. And from yesterday morning through this afternoon, I received supportive emails back, which I can happily share with you guys or read with you guys from forty-six other families who are supporting what I'm about to say. We recently learned that Imagine OPRF Project One will close half of the tennis courts from summer 2020 through summer 2022 in order to accommodate parking needs for construction company employees. This seems to be putting the short-term parking needs of the construction company over the well-being of our student athletes, which is simply unacceptable for any subset of our OPRF student body, period. If half the courts are closed, this means bad. Number one, the boys' and girls' teams would have to find alternative facilities for daily practices for two seasons. Yes, there are other tennis courts in Oak Park, but they are not readily available. Taylor Park, for instance, is used by Fennel for their tennis program. That leaves Schofield Park and Lindbergh, but we are unsure of the commitment that the village would actually make. And there may not be enough courts for the number of students in the program because Schofield is already used for spillover practice. In effect, that may force the coaches to reduce the number of students in the program for the next two years. And of the emails that I received, I got several where there's a lot of concern of parents and students about that fact. The boys' and girls' teams could not have home matches or host any tournaments for two seasons, meaning that all those student athletes need the ability to compete on their home turf with family and friends, and with all the school spirit benefits that result from playing in your own backyard. Because every match will be played away, it also significantly reduces the amount of matches that parents and other family members will be able to view, not to mention reduce homework and family time as they will be spending more time on more buses for longer hours each night. And this is not to say that, we obviously know that every student athlete spends time traveling to away matches. What we're saying is that to be able to go from fifty percent of your matches at home to zero percent of your matches at home for two years is not acceptable. Number three, this will also affect students that participate in the racket sport PE unit. Many of these students have never picked up a racket, and now they may lose the opportunity to be introduced to a lifelong game that provides phenomenal health and social benefits. OPRF tries itself on equitable solutions for all students and tries to put students at the forefront of decision-making. It seems that the student-first process was overlooked in this case at the expense of all the tennis student athletes. So we asked, "What message is being sent to these kids and the coaches with this decision?"
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to act in the background?
Are you clerk, Ford clerk? And the next person is Mark Trinka.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I feel like I have a pretty good historical knowledge to discuss the tennis court issue and the proposed construction station and parking in lieu of tennis courts. My four children probably play tennis at OPRF. In this program, they learn to be part of the school community. They're taught teamwork, hard work, and discipline. They learn to respect themselves, respect opponents, and most importantly, respect the game. Part of this experience was the ability to play in the community as the counselors, advisors, teachers, and coaches repeated to them to make this fairly large high school a bit smaller of a place. By valuing construction worker parking over the values that the school purports to embrace, at best is confusing. The tennis program at OPRF is a story of history of NCAA and professional players competing here. It has been one of the most successful programs at the school. However, its conference, sectional, and state results are not the reason that the program resonates. It resonates because it is ostensibly a no-cut sport for boys and girls. Through large, most of the effort from the coaches and volunteers and utilizing the resources that are on campus, the school is able to bring this sport of life to many kids wanting that ability to belong to a team. Once again, are we devaluing this experience so that we can stage construction and ease of access for construction workers for three years, two to three years? As I'm quite sure you are aware, the physical patient sport that continues to have many of the most participants at OPRF, as you guessed at the tennis program. By putting rackets in the hands of high school students, you are facilitating a potential love of this game that takes little in the way of resources to play, a packet, some balls, and a court. If we mitigate the number of courts, we minimize the number of players. Is this our intended consequence or merely an unintended construction step? Finally, the OPRF courts are a community resource. Yes, these courts have been in need of some help over the years, while many in sports enjoy the large ass. However, they still hold a place for people of all ages to enjoy the game. The school enjoys a great relationship with this community, and part of its ability is to utilize the physical plant of this school. I'd like you to encourage to reexamine where construction parking and staging could take place that would not drastically affect our tennis programs. I encourage you to look at the core values of serving our children before we serve at the altar of project managers and architects and their ease of doing business. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Harmon.
Hello, ma'am. I would like to acknowledge the progress that the district has made towards physical accessibility in the building. Recent tour revealed negative door closures, door actuaries, and previously inaccessible entrances. And I hope that the board will release the full accessibility study thus so the public can see and understand fully the current condition of the building. I would also like to encourage the board to fully consider the recommendation of hiring a D.A. coordinator to continue the important access work that's already been started. The complexities of the American Disabilities Act for both physical and program access require understanding of disability rights and our relationship with the disability community, as well as comprehensive understanding of the law and code for payments. It's a job that would be heavily involved with regulation and policy, potential conflict resolution, and facilities management. I hope you'll consider the email references about the A.D. coordinator certification requirements to make a meaningful A.D. coordinator position. And the board can hear more about this going forward, especially this year.
John Duffy.
Good evening. I'm here representing the Committee for Equity and Accession in Education. First and foremost, I want to thank this board, this administration, and our dedicated faculty and staff for all you are doing to realize racial equity for all our students. You adopted a racial equity policy and it's historic and it's commitments. Most importantly, to guarantee racial equity, this administration with community input is developing a set of procedures around accountability and implementation to realize those goals. One of the many parts of those procedures, I would say probably the most important part in my estimation, is the Racial Equity Impact Assessment Protocol. It's used to evaluate existing programs, planned programs, staffing, budgeting, et cetera. In fact, the ongoing work around hiring more teachers of color has been guided by the racial equity lens. The same is true for the dedicated work, hard work being done by our faculty around freshman restructuring. They looked at freshman courses with the racial equity lens, and they found patterns that they could not let stand. And that was the motivation, the data, among others, driving the current work around racial equity in freshman curriculum. I urge this administration to do the same regarding the police officer who was stationed in this building. Positions are, as we know, has never been evaluated. It's time to do so, especially in light of what our children are telling us. I know you will do that. As we move forward with freshman restructuring, I want you to consider some other possibilities. I want you to consider to continue to compile documents and research from here and around the country. Let me give an example of a recent development. Professor Emeritus Timothy Shanahan did a presentation on reading research in the community in December. Towards the end of that presentation, he was asked about the freshman restructuring and what his opinion was. He says he would support it. In fact, reading research is in our favor in the work we're doing. I want us also to consider, perhaps, and this administration might not like this, but networking within the network. There are other schools in minority student achievement network, Madison Area High Schools, Davidson for sure, who's moved forward despite the criticisms you've heard from people in this community. One of the Cambridge Massachusetts High Schools are doing it. I'll get one last point. I also want you to consider establishing some kind of ongoing presence for community around this planning process. We know the work is hard, but the more people can be informed, the more we can dispel some of this information and we can move this thing forward successfully. As you consider the new rule of duty. Thank you very much.
John Keesling.
Good evening. My name is John Keesling, and I'm here to speak on behalf of concerns regarding the tennis courts. I wanted to start by saying the Imagine program for OPRF is a fantastic objective, and construction is a great thing. However, construction also is a service business. Contractors accommodate as a collaborative partner to help keep a campus active and not be a distraction to the normal course of business of education and extracurricular activities. I want to note that it is standard in Chicago and surrounding villages that workers find their own parking, and that's just how it works in construction. Introducing workers into a school campus area creates a high level of risk for the student population when the campus is already a very congested area. Having workers ingressing and egressing as proposed at any time of the day poses a high level of risk and liability to the student body. All it takes is one incident, whether a near miss or a fatality involving a student in a vehicle, and it becomes a real game changer. Bringing worker vehicles into campus property also creates another safety concern and liability that needs to be looked at in regards to the content of personal vehicles. It only takes one bad apple to have the contents in a personal vehicle be illicit and/or illegal or not permitted on school property. The proximity so close to the school to even risk this from happening should not be tolerated. The question, however, is, is this more about staging or maybe trailers for work? If so, there are multiple options that could be sued for other locations. Note also contractors figure out interior staging areas for renovation projects and get creative all the time. The contractor that you hired, and no doubt sold you, and who is a very fine contractor, I'm sure sold you that they can get creative. For city work, there is no space on, there is no space in on-time deliveries, often referred to as lean construction practices, are part of a typical routine. The contractor, again, that is hired for this project is very familiar with this practice, and I hope that they would implement this for this project. Office space for the contractor can be stacked or condensed trailers for office space. Another common practice for contractors for renovations project is also to find space within the renovation itself for temporary office space. Our children, young adults, have enough to worry about these days. Construction improvements are a great thing. However, the safety, well-being of our students is priority number one. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Wong.
Everybody, thank you for letting me speak. I'll keep it short, since Marty Lennis did such a great job setting the stage for what we're talking about, that's the tennis court and the lack, and losing those for the next two years. Right now, Lennis spoke about forty-six families that supported her letter. Well, there was over a hundred students that participated in both the boys' and girls' this past season, this past year. That's a hundred student athletes that would not possibly be able to play a home match, which is extremely important for not only them, but for the families as well. And looking at it, you know, most schools of this size have a minimum of twelve tennis courts on their property. We only have eight. You're gonna cut that in half to four. Right now, with the amount of kids and it being a no-cut sport, they still have to split practices and do them staggered throughout the day. So our student athletes, some are not getting home till after dark every night of the week because of practice times. I encourage you to think about that. Construction, they can park anywhere. Have them get village stickers to park on the street. You know, working in downtown Oak Park, there were four high-rises put up. All those construction workers found spots to park. I think they can do that for this project as well. Thank you very much.
Kate Redling.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kate Redling. I'd like to recognize the action of our young people yesterday made some folks uncomfortable. And that led to a number of conversations that I had today. And these conversations repeatedly reminded me that many of us can miss the urgent messages because we don't like the way someone delivered the message. I'm here to speak against the continuing practice of keeping an armed and/or uniformed police officer inside of our schools. I don't believe that having armed police in our schools is productive or a practical method for building relationships with youth who have possibly suffered trauma and that this agreement is, with the intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Oak Park, I'm here to speak against that. I do value proximity and also understand the usefulness of uniforms. I'm an avid scouter, so I use that tool frequently. However, when a uniform carries detrimental ramifications for any of the population that it is in proximity to, the usefulness is diminished, at least, and causes harm at the worst. If there's any possibility of causing harm to even one youth in the care of our schools and of our community, we have a duty to find alternative ways to build relationships and otherwise achieve the goals intended with this intergovernmental agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that did not sign up for public comment that would like to make it? Okay. Archie Walker. There it goes.
Had a cop.
Yes. Yes.
Good evening. Board of trustees. And fellow community members, my name is Artie Walker Badagotla, and I am here as the parent of a senior student and as an Oak Park Village trustee. Let me be clear, the views that I'm sharing today are mine alone and do not represent the views of my board. As I emailed this board last week, the village board reviewed the D-200 Village of Oak Park IGA, intergovernmental agreement that dictates the use and presence of a school resource officer at D-200. I emailed all of you the talking points that I made during my comments at the village board meeting. And I'm here to reiterate some of those points. Let me be unequivocally clear, we do not leave police in our schools. It is my belief as both the parent of a student here at OPRF and as a village trustee whose role requires understanding of policing in our community that the IGA between D-200 and the village be completely revoked. The data is clear in both Oak Park and across America. Having police in our schools doesn't make our schools any safer. SROs, or school resource officers, were put into D-200 in 1999 after the Columbine High School massacre. And their use or effectiveness hasn't been questioned since that time. A 2018 report from the bipartisan Congressional Resource Service, the think tank that inside that works inside of Congress, cited a study that showed of the 197 school shootings that happened on school premises between April 1999 and March 2018, there was only one instance in which an SRO stopped an active school shooter by returning fired. Multiple social justice and legal advocacy organizations have shown that having police in school criminalizes common adolescent behaviors of black and brown students specifically. And when adolescent behaviors are criminalized, students in police schools may find themselves at greater risk of involvement with the criminal justice system merely by virtue of attending school. And it also increases the amount of information our police department receives about students, as is the case for the D-200 IGA on page four, Appendix C, under Guidelines for Reciprocal Reporting. I'm happy that one of the most problematic areas of the IGA I notified this board about is now being remedied tonight with a consent agenda item under agency and police interviews. That practice allowed the police to act in loco verantis for students when they were being questioned, meaning the police could act as a student's parent if the students were not, if the parents were not able to come to school when the student was being questioned. Finally, only one D-200 board member has voted against having police in schools since this IGA was enacted in 1999. And that happened in 2014 with then-D-200 board member Sharon Patchick Lyman. She questioned whether this SRO is a good use of this school's fund, given that the village has funded this SRO since 1999. I'm almost done. Patchick Lyman stated in her comments that there have been no reports or assessment done on what SROs do and how effective this post is on this campus. And she said, with no information about how much time the SRO spends with students, we don't know how many students this person sees, we don't know how many times he calls the police officers to come in or checks back with the department. So she argued, Sharon Patchick Lyman argued, that this money should go towards more counselors, for instance. And I hope that school board members agree with her. Thank you.
I'm just going to circle and I figure it out to me. Hi. Good evening. My name is Shovil Mahadev. I'm a clinical associate professor at Northwestern Gritsford School of Law in the Children and Family Justice Center there. Like many of you, really, my most important role here is that I'm the parent of a Oak Park River Forest High School child, student, and I'm concerned for her safety and well-being every day that she walks into these halls. She's here now. I'm here because I'm deeply troubled by the presence of school resource officers or SROs in this school. I spent most of my 20-year career in representing youth and adults in juvenile criminal justice systems and studying related policy issues. Nearly all of the local and national school experts I have worked with and whose work I have analyzed, such as the Schreiber Center, Justice Policy Institute, the ACLU, and the Dignity in Schools Campaign, along with various academics, agree that the presence of police or SROs is problematic, both in terms of school safety and with respect to the school-to-prison pipeline. There's no shortage of reports or studies tying the presence of these officers to the escalation of school disciplinary responses and increases in the criminalization of normal adolescent behavior, particularly for students of color and students with disabilities. And referral to justice systems excessive discipline shame can lead students to be pushed out of or drop out of school. And that's where I come in oftentimes. I know that being pushed out of school severely and often irreparably impacts these students and increases the likelihood of their interaction with justice systems. But what about safety? Students of color and students with disabilities disproportionately experience a lack of safety when SROs are present. Nonetheless, SROs have become a fixture in schools in this post-Columbine era of fear around mass school shootings. But there's actually no credible evidence that the presence of an SRO actually prevents such incidents. In fact, research suggests that the presence of law enforcement and overly punitive policies actually contribute to a cult of silence, which decreases the likelihood that students will approach school administrators with potentially life-saving information. One study from University of Washington that I reviewed noted that the increased use of law enforcement mindsets, personnel, and technologies in schools, as well as the increasing transfer of school discipline to the juvenile criminal justice systems have direct consequences on the overall school climate. The result is that many of these features erode trusty relationships between school staff and students. This has direct consequences for the prevention of school rampage. So what does work? When kids have close supportive relationships with the adult they trust and feel they are treated fairly in the school system, they're more likely to report concerning behavior. Finally, I doubt that the parents of Cory Walgren would agree that the presence of an SRO increased his safety. Cory was a 16-year-old Naperville North High School student who committed suicide, sadly, after he was questioned by a school resource officer and deemed without his parents' knowledge. And although a law was enacted to address that and prevent that, and I'm grateful for this board for taking action to address it too, the presence of an SRO rightly increases the chance of similar interrogations of kids. I'm just going to close by saying, I know we all want a safe environment for our children, but the feeling of safety is just not the same of actually taking steps to being safe. I hope the district will consider eliminating that program, the SRO program, in favor of taking steps to have a more positive and inclusive school culture than actually promote the goals of safe community. Thank you.
Susan Fletcher? Suzanne Penix? And that's what I said.
I'm here as a resident and an auntie. I have nieces and nephews at OPRF. But more importantly, as a resident who has been listening to the youth of this village, who had came to the village hall in November and shared stories bravely of the problems that they had had at the hands of Oak Park police. And I know that a lot of Oak Parkers think that we don't have a police problem in Oak Park, that that's only the other side of Austin in Chicago, that our police are fine, just like our equity is fine. We're Oak Park, you know, we're known for this. But we really do have a problem, and having police in schools has a detrimental impact on some of the students. So to cause trauma to a portion of the population on a daily basis, to give an illusion of safety to another portion of the population and their parents does not seem like the wise choice. We are responsible for all of the students who reside in our village and attend our schools. And they have been speaking and telling us, and if we're not listening, that's amiss. So I don't think that we should have an SRO police officer armed in the school. I don't think it really does contribute to safety based on the far more experienced knowledge of the two people who came before me. But I just have been listening to the youth, and I really respect them for telling their truth in spite of the increased risks to themselves. So please really take that to heart and consider their safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Fletcher?
Hi, my name is Deb Fletcher. I am a Oak Park president and an auntie of students at OPRF. And I don't know anything that I can say that better say what everybody has said already. I just sort of want to echo that and repeat one thing that I heard when talking about the tennis courts, that safety and the well-being of the students should be front and foremost. And it feels like listening to our nieces and nephews and some of the other students, particularly students of color, that that is not happening here. So please, think about this, listen to the students, and reconsider the getting rid of the SRO people. Thank you.
Sherri Johnson?
Hello, my name is Sherri Johnson. I'm a community member, member of OPRF's Parent Group, Parent Student Success, and a member of the E-Team. I'd like to thank the administration and board for all of their work on the freshman curriculum restructuring. I know the progress today also reflects the efforts of many current and former teachers, and I want to recognize them for their tremendous contributions. Many in this community have pushed OPRF to champion and expect better academic and social emotional outcomes for all of its students. And we are heartened to finally see what we expect to be systematic change in that direction. Tonight, the administration will discuss their support of the teachers' request to delay full implementation of freshman curriculum restructuring until 2022. This requested delay initially made me worry that this long-awaited effort would be derailed, as this has been the history at OPRF. But I trust the reasoning Dr. Pruitt Adams and Assistant Superintendent Gray Johnson expressed in their letter to OPRF. I support the teachers, giving the teachers ample time to master their enhanced responsibilities. However, discussing this latest update with community members has yielded a couple concerns to which I'd like the board to consider. We need the administration and the board to be accountable for this change. By this, I mean we need you to create a regular vehicle of communication that informs and educates the community and includes an up-to-date rollout plan. It's not acceptable for the community to have to dig through the minutes of various board meetings or wait until the next large community meeting to know what the plan is right now, today. Secondly, I'd like for the administration and the board to clarify what will be piloted and what will be implemented as systematic change. Previous community presentations have referenced the rollout in 2021 as a pilot. The word pilot does not conjure a feeling of systemic change that we are expecting. I look forward to changes. I appreciate all the work everyone has done. But I think we need to make sure that the effort is accountable to the community. I know you guys probably hear a lot more negative comments than you hear positive. And I think that's because all the people in agreement are expecting this to happen. So we don't feel that we have to email you every day or anything like that. But in lieu of that, I'd like to see more direct communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Frances Kraft?
Hi, good evening. My name is Frances Kraft. I'm a former D-97 teacher and a River Forest resident for 23 years. I'm also the parent of two OPRF grads and a member of the E-Team. I'm here to voice my support for the freshman curriculum restructuring plan. Although I too, as Sherri mentioned, was disappointed to hear that the timeline has changed for the rollout of the implementation, I'm in full support of the plan as a whole, which includes a voice of our teachers and a careful plan to approach to ensure success. I would ask that the district commit to transparency and communication with the community throughout this process with deadlines and accountability so we can support the difficult work ahead with confidence. In an memo to the board, our district stated a collective commitment to dismantling an inequitable core structure that has disproportionately sorted our black and brown students into college prep classes, even when their academic profile suggests that they're just as capable as their peers who are enrolled in honors. During my time as a teacher and also in my work the past four years with the E-Team, I've seen academic opportunities denied to our students over and over again. It is our system that is broken and must be changed. Many of our students, teachers, board members, and administrators are activated. Many in our community have been fighting for these changes for decades. This cannot be an us-versus-them argument. We're at an important time in Oak Park, and we all need to get it right. It's not a question of whether we will dismantle institutional racism or even when, it's well past time. We need every member of our community to commit to fighting for the opportunities of all our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who did not sign up that would like to raise public comment? Okay.
I would.
Oh, you would? Okay.
Just can't real quickly, speaking on tennis. My name is Peter Brennan. Mr. Keesley, I was speaking earlier about various issues concerning staging. He was too modest to manage. He's actually a senior vice president of Walsh Construction, so he actually does have a lot of expertise in that area. That's one man that will.
Thank you. Turn the agenda over to Dr. Pruitt Adams.
We are going to adjust the agenda and go to the first discussion item, and that's the freshman curriculum standards coming for Mr. Gray Johnson, Associate Superintendent, and the Sheila Harden, Chair of the Faculty Senate. This discussion is presented as an update to the board prior to the presentation. There will be a joint statement. And this is for discussion only. This item is for In compliance with Strategic Plan, Priority Two, and District Policy Six, Code of Law.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, second memo, I mean, I know you certainly heard some comments on that. The purpose of this is really to open this up for conversation with the board. But before we officially open it up, Sheila Harden has a statement that she and I have co-drafted to explain how we've come to this point at this time of the school year. So I'll turn it over to Sheila.
Thank you for having me here today. Good evening. The OPRF administration and the Faculty Senate are jointly committed to addressing the racial predictability of our freshman enrollment patterns and performance outcomes. We've been working together to ensure that the majority of our freshman students experience one high-level, rigorous curriculum in English, History, Science, and World Languages. We are also working on making curricular adjustments in mathematics. Over the past several months, we have started developing new curriculum, identifying professional development needs, and establishing support structures to ensure that all of our students benefit from this shift. In the course of the process, one thing has become clear. In order to carry out the plan with fidelity to this work, the implementation date must be shifted to the fall of 2022. This adjusted timeline will realistically enable us to provide our students with the level of educational expertise that they deserve. We look forward to continuing this collaboration to ensure that Oak Park and River Forest High School provides those things that are best for all of our students. Thank you.
And with that said, we'll head off for questions.
One thing has become relatively clear in all the conversations that I've had on this, which is that the amount of work to redo the curriculum is larger or more significant than we originally thought. What I am concerned about, and what I want to ask about, is what is, why is this project... What I am concerned about, what I want to ask about, is what is, why is this project being viewed as a Big Bang implementation, of which all this work needs to be completed before we start out a path to make changes? And have we considered breaking the project up in some other way?
I guess I'll begin by responding by saying that when we're talking about providing more equitable outcomes for our students and recognizing the patterns that we see that led us to this point, we didn't see it existing in one division, in one specific place, where we said, ah, that's it, that's where we have to start. Because it's more pronounced, so more problematic in that place than others. What we saw this was true across the board. The patterns that we saw, particularly when we're talking about enrollment, are fairly consistent from division to division to division. And so because of that, it was something that was systemic to the school as a whole, how the school functioned as a whole, and not something that was specific to how an individual division was going. So that was important. The other thing that we had to consider was the fact that there's an urgency to this work. I don't think there's, no, anybody saying this, hey, well, Sheila or me or anybody else who's been moving forward with this work, who wouldn't want to say, yeah, we want to get this done as quickly as we can. But in order to do that with fidelity, what we need to do is make sure that we are taking the time that we, you know, the years we have. And so given the level of urgency that we have for this work and given the need for fidelity, taking the extra time to get the whole thing done is very important. Stretching it out so we parcel it out in a different timeline for divisions is something different than I, I don't think that that would effectively capture the problem that we're aiming to address.
So if, in that construct, I guess, you know, in my, in my thinking, by doing, by doing pilots, which is what we talked about originally, and I assume those are still in the plan, we learn as we go. And I'm just a little bit concerned with spending two and a half years, or whatever it is, to redesign a curriculum, which ends up in a Big Bang, so that, have we rethought the pilots within extended date?
Our plan is to come to the board later this spring with a more detailed plan for timeline moving forward that will include an answer to that question as it relates to the professional development that we're going to have moving forward in much greater detail than we talked at the second before. Updates on the quality of the curriculum work and the specifics of that moving forward, as well as updates on how we crafted out our student support system. All right, so I hear the question. The plan is to bring that more complete package to the board at a later date this spring. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Yeah. I echo some of what Craig was saying, but I don't think we repeated that. The question I have is, so the decision is to extend for one year. And what went into that? And I mean, do we have, if map out such that we know that is, you know, a realistic plan where we have all of the necessary steps and actions in a detailed plan to assure that that is real? And what, you know, what other factors went into the decision-making on choosing that new date? Yeah.
The sense of urgency that we feel for the work is real. And the implication that we're waiting here for full rollout does not imply that things are not happening. So I want to be clear and correct this piece a little bit to what you're saying. Teachers are working constantly, but we're also currently teaching the students who are in our classrooms, creating new courses, collapsing courses, deciding what course proposals. And remember, course proposals go in in October. So if there was going to be a new course for the fall of 2021, you'd have to be finished with the proposal and have a good outline of that by the time you return to the school in the fall. So a year is a realistic extension to have a full year of writing, as this year has been a year where we are making some decisions on what those next steps will be in terms of what will we be teaching, what will it look like, who, what divisions will work together, and things like that. Those conversations are still ongoing. The sense of urgency is a year is all we're willing to do to move that just that much because we want to do this work. The faculty is committed to the equity work of the district. So I want to be clear, work is ongoing. This isn't stopping anything, it's just saying we need to do the work. And Sarah and Tom, I heard you in August say similar things when the file was presented to you at the board table.
I want to just echo collectively what both Greg and Sheila have said. This is a multi-faceted approach. We are writing curriculum across all content areas for the freshman course block. Still, also conducting an audit of our sophomore curriculum. There is the supports that have to be in place that we've talked about that are also being created to support kids across all levels. When we talk about a multi-tier system of support. And then on top of that, identifying the professional development that has to also take place. This is a multi-faceted approach so that when it is time to roll it out, it does not have a negative impact on any of our students. Things will be happening throughout the process, the work is not stopping. The additional urgency to it is that when we do it, we do it right.
Ralph?
So very supportive of when you do it, you do it right. Believe in that, right? But to just get to where I see maybe some shortcomings in the process today from a transparency standpoint, and then from our capacity as a board to provide appropriate oversight. I would like to see developed and delivered to the board a rubric with outcomes that you expect to be generated over the process in each of the divisions that show you're moving ahead of pace to meet this new deadline. I would like to see an outcome-based rubric developed. And then I would like reports back to the board on whether or not your process is in fact meeting these outcomes by these deadlines, or whether you're experiencing problems, because problems always come up in any implementation. And then it strikes me as the different academic disciplines may have different issues as they go through developing new curriculum, revising and articulating across grade level and doing all that difficult work. So to Craig and Tom's point, if we get to close to a year from now and maybe two of the divisions are ready to go, but two are not, would a partial implementation at least take place at that point where the two divisions that are ready to go can go? And we could learn from them, and we could actually understand through the process how far you are away from getting to full implementation for the other groups? And the final part of that is, by reporting that to the board, I think that creates a lot more transparency on the progress to the community. Because, you know, we're not, as board members, we're not sitting in at these meetings. We don't know what's going on. We don't see the depths of the work that you're doing at the faculty level. We understand that you're doing a lot of work. But we don't know how well it's progressing or where you're finding issues. We need to know that as it's going out, and we need to be able to evaluate that against an outcomes-generated group work. So I think that that would be very helpful in the process. But I would like an answer to the question on if you'd be willing to do a partial implementation if maybe just one division isn't ready to go, or just one division is.
I just wanted to say first that I hear a lot of clear need for outcomes-based rubric and regular transparent updates to the board, right? A lot of clear, I think that there's wisdom in that. And conversations we've had with our division heads, we were first discussing these A to B extended timeline, the development of just such a timeline for how the work would progress moving forward was part of our conversation. Regarding the last question about what we would do, I can't, it's a hypothetical situation. We're talking down the road exactly what we would do, and there are a lot of unknowns that would go in there. But I want to reiterate before I even go further down that road, that our commitment at this point, where we want to go at this point, is have our divisions period ready at this point. And we both, I don't want to reiterate, too, believe that this is very realistic. We have a joint commitment for that, for that end. And I think that's a critical point for the school district. I don't want to underscore that point too much, but I think it really can be, not stressing it, but we cannot do due diligence to wherever, this is a critical point for the school support.
There's that old adage, right, people plan, God laughs. So issues always come up. And, and I think we ought to be, we are very supportive as a board of this change in approach because of the value it will have for enhancing equitable access to educational opportunity at this grade level. So I think part of your planning as an administration and faculty team should be, if in fact you cannot make full implementation across all divisions, that you have a plan for implementing where feasible and where they are ready. And I don't think that that's going halfway or whatever. I just think that's being thoughtful in your planning process and moving forward in a way that our students will realize a benefit sooner, and our community can see that we are actually committed to doing what we say we're going to do.
If the timeline's now met, we would obviously be having a more specific answer to that conversation. I'm in full support of bringing updates back again and having a timeline. The faculty welcomes a concrete timeline also moving forward. I hear what you're saying, but I'm not gonna, I don't want it to be hypotheticals. I'm...
Not to be, I want a, I want a process that anticipates different outcomes, isn't it?
But you're talking about with the new date.
Yes, a new date.
Right. And I'm saying that this is the new date.
We understand there's a new date.
Right. The new date is us doing exactly what you just said. So we would obviously do it again if we needed to do something for it just again. The students are the goal here, and working for the students. If something comes up that has not been anticipated, we would never risk the students' outcomes to just falsely make a presentation for a timeline. That would just never happen. So I hear you, and that's why I'm here today to work with the administration to get this done and get it done well. And the faculty is fully supportive of that. So if there was something comes up, I hear what you're saying, absolutely. If a division or a group was having an issue that we had not thought of, then that would have to come back. I would have no problem with that whatsoever. But at this point, this is the plan moving forward, and I welcome the timeline being presented this spring.
Steve?
I'm appreciative of the timeline and the, it's just I don't want us to get to next February and be having this conversation again because it's February already. And so I would echo the comments about ensuring that we have more regular updates, as well as, I'm thinking beyond just the implementation. I'm thinking the metrics for, as it's being implemented, its effectiveness, how many students are impacted, how it's working, like, so I'm not sure if your current plan includes details that would carry us through the process of what it actually looks like when it's happening. But I would love to see some of that in the plan as we move forward. And then also, there have been numerous concerns about rigor presented in various formats from community members. And as we're in this process of increasing communication about the actual rollout, including the specifics of what students will be seeing in those pieces as well. It's just, it just keeps coming up. So it hasn't come up recently, I feel, because we haven't discussed it recently. And I would like to make sure that we're addressing those concerns that come up as well.
Thank you.
So, Sarah, I want to thank you for being here. I think that it is really meaningful to have faculty presence and have you. Certainly part of the conversation at the board level, right? I mean, it's, it's great to hear your support. One of the things I'm a little nervous about though is it didn't, I guess it didn't really solidify for me that, like, course changes are due in October. Like, October of 2020 feels really soon, right? So how much of this work needs to be done by that sort of October 2020 deadline? And how much of it can carry through the work of next year? I just, I want to make sure that our timelines are realistic.
That's what's changing, I'm sorry, that's what's changing. Initially with the current, the initial timeline, we would have had to come with units of study in April, and then have a full curriculum done in October, this coming October. With the timeline moving off, it gives us time to generate the curriculum.
That makes sense.
So there is no curriculum coming board this October.
So October is not, no longer a, now there's...
That's just my great impression now for, in terms of where some of that discussion came up.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I want to make sure, just to echo everyone, you know, it felt very ambitious when we first talked about this in the fall, and that was very exciting. But it's also, you know, caused some anxiety for community members, a little bit for me, I'll be honest, just in terms of getting everything done that we need to get done. So I'm in favor of a more measured approach, if that's going to get us advanced this work more effectively.
So, and I would echo what Sarah said in terms of, when I saw the date, part of me was, a bigger part of me was, I don't know if relieved is the right word, but I, you know, it's sad saying, hearing some things from some faculty, not a good sample size, the math teacher would, I'm sure, attest, but...
So you're exactly right now.
Yeah, it's a pretty widespread overall consensus that came to. So, so that sparks a few thoughts or even a question in specific for you, Sheila. Can you talk to, speak to, to what degree this has caused more enthusiasm among faculty, where maybe previously there was some angst about the timeline? Is there more buy-in, if that's the right word, as a result of this switch?
The Faculty Senate has always been supportive of the freshman curriculum outcomes changing, so race is not a predictable factor in that. That has never wavered. The anxiety about the timeline was real, and the faculty side charged me to go to the administration and ask for the extension based on numerous conversations had with curriculum team members and other faculty members throughout the semester. But the outcome, the work, that the buy-in for that was never in question, nor has that wavered. The ability to do the work well is what we're going to be able to do.
Got it. And then I'll say something that everyone, I think, in this room probably knows, but just maybe a little further away from academia may not. There was no real question this being a four, six, or eight-month delay. It's binary, it's happening in a fall of some year, because that's the way that the, you know, the academic year happens.
Yeah, there's, it would be a delay, or something that happened, sprays us.
Right. And so one last, might be my last comment slash request, and that is in terms of communication. And I know that back in the summer, when this was first unveiled, six months ago, there was a whole host of information that we, you know, put out there and it's still on the website. And I think this gives us more time to really reassess, okay, what, what belongs there? What is there new insight and material that would be helpful for us to share? And also to make clear what that information is in terms of, is this, you know, explicit endorsement of what we're doing? Or is this information that went into the equation that equals what we're doing? There, I'm bad with math, sorry. And that not, you know, any one piece of this puzzle is not proof, aha, this is going to work, or aha, this doesn't work, because that's the concern that I, we all experienced, I think, early on, was people who could assail any one particular component or article or study and say that we're cherry picking. And so I just think the communication on that's important to really think that best practice is what is the best nuanced way of doing that. So no necessary response, but Greg, you might be prepared to say something. I can see in your eyes.
No, I hear it clear. I mean, you're adding to the specific, that landing page we have on the website as part of the call for the timeline communication, you know, change and updates to the board. So I, that's heard a lot of clear, I think there's wisdom in that, and we'll be looking for that in the following, okay?
Thank you.
I will serve in two capacities here, I think. But first, I will express my own views, questions, and then try to get a sense of the collective request and board role in this process. But the first is my own kind of take is that I have addressed this concern fairly to our administration, that my initial concern with saying, taking more time, was, is this an issue of time, or is this an issue of our capacity? And if it's a capacity issue, we can take five years. And it does not mean that we achieve the goals that we laid out. And so it's hard to, and this kind of wraps up a lot of what others have said about the information that is needed to be able to evaluate where we are, and our responsibility as a board to be able to do that. So having an informed process that includes metrics, that includes, you know, outcomes that are made with fidelity and that are evidence based on, you know, best practices. And also, one of the things I haven't heard a lot about in terms of the time that we're using is how we... is how we reach out to other schools that are doing this work and learning from them in a way that inform professional development, the student supports. I appreciate all the work that's done internally, and I know it's a lot. And I just wonder sometimes if we become a little too esoteric, thinking that this place is so vastly different or special or something unique from others that we cannot learn from other school districts that have done this work. And the request that I have has to do, and Greg alluded to it as well, and Rob, so did you, in terms of, you know, I understand that April was the time we were anticipating hearing about some units of study. And I, will the timeline include information about what will be done next year? That if there are units that are ready to go, how those can be used to inform this practice, to be used as, you know, time for our teachers to train each other and to support each other in this work, and how that can inform the process, and how we can, you know, I've said this a lot in the last, I don't know, two years, we're losing daylight. And I, you know, fully appreciate the need to get it right, to do it right, because it has been at our district at every level. But the need for information that is data-driven and that is more than reporting that we've had to date, and I will say that it has been disappointing to arrive at this point and not have the, all of the information. It makes it very challenging to set board goals, to know how we're doing with our strategic plan, to communicate to our community about, you know, being ambassadors for this work. And the support of this board is here. But if there are issues, if there are, you know, trip-ups, if there's a need for course correction, if we're not informed on that, the goals that we set are meaningless, and there's no way to benchmark it, the work that we're doing. So, I'm imploring our administration to trust the support that this board is giving and to work with us both publicly so that our community benefits, but also just as that relationship that we talk about to our staff in a way that does not feel like we have to have this positive face that is more about public relations than it is about the true issues. And that may be minimizing, but I don't want us to get into a position where it feels like we're spinning an issue. And we came really close this time. And need full information, but also need to understand how we're going to use the work that was done this past year to inform what's coming. And if there was work done, what is it? And how, if there are units that are ready to go, how is the work that those teacher teams that worked on that shouldn't have to sit? How do we make sure that that is used to inform?
So, I just want to say very quickly that the plan that we plan to bring forth in the spring will have timelines and benchmarks for where we want to be. With regards to learning from other districts, we are doing that. With regards to professional development, we're bringing in people from the outside who have done this work in various ways, in various places, at various levels. So, we are not locking on learning. We're not, in terms of professional development, in terms of research, we're not locking that into our institution only, but we do have some very knowledgeable people internally who can help us do this work as well.
Oh, and I never mentioned...
Oh, I know. I know.
But I think it goes back to, you know, Sheila, what you said, that a lot of work has been done. We're at a point now where we are pushing this out to ensure that it is done in the way that we have all imagined and know that our students deserve. But at the same time, if we aren't aware of what's going into it, it's hard to have the trust of our community that we are going to move forward. And, you know, there were several comments tonight about decades in the wait for this to occur. So, that's the part, I know, you know, you're intimately involved with it. Of course, you know what's going on. But it has to be presented in a way that is, the forward-facing piece has to include information that our families and our students see the path forward, and that is not aspirational, but is concrete. And these are the steps we're going to take.
Jackie?
Yes.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
So, a couple, because I asked a question, a couple of comments or thoughts I have that I, one, having been here for a while, I appreciate the passion and the statement of commitment. But there is frustration because ultimately what this decision means is that the next approvals will be to the next board. So, we're, you know, you have the support of this board, but we're pushing it to the next board in terms of approval and timeline, I believe. Secondly, the timing of this, and we'll then land implementation with teacher contract negotiations, which is not a, the focus needs to be 100% on the best interests of our students at the time. So, those are just things that are conflicting in my mind. I do appreciate, we want to do it right, and that needs to happen, so that's...
I think, Jack, you said some things that really, I thought were really spot on. And it's, you know, it's the words we say. We say words like transparency and communication, and then you're listening to it, and you're doing your best to figure out what that looks like from your world to us or to the very diverse out there of the community. And so, I just encourage that to really be something that we all dig in together to see what that really looks like. Is it videos? Is it something that, you know, is, in what narrative form, in what communication of before and after? I think humor is important, right? And brushstrokes without diminishing the work. That's, so that's, you know, through the eye of the needle, I'm talking about. But if you get what I'm getting at is, there's this sense that I've had my three years in the board that, you know, I'm not in that, you know, I don't live in your world. I'm a volunteer guy, doing my best to keep up with all this. And if I'm kind of hanging on by a thread as to how to even, actually get what you're doing, and that's no fault of anyone, it's just the reality of the different functions we have. I think it's so important to think through over the next several months, how to bridge that gap, because I think that's where a lot of community support can come in and allay fears. It's not going to solve it all, and it's not going to, you know, but I just, so in my very messy way, I just want to like put it out there of an ongoing dialogue about that, because it's a huge lift that everyone's doing, and how to characterize that without freaking, you know? So, there's all this balancing act, and as you can see, I'm just trying to navigate in this short little comment. So, does that make any sense whatsoever?
It don't, yeah.
Well, thank you. Very affirming.
I do want to say thank you, like, the collaborative effort is obvious and appreciated. The, we have gotten a lot of comments tonight about support, but the folks who don't support are not in this room tonight, but they're still out there. And I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that there are people who do not understand the importance of this work and don't understand what it is even, and what it means, and the benefits to their students, even though they're not supporters of it. So, as we're talking about transparency and communication, I really want us to include, you know, the conversations that need to be had for the voices that are not in this room tonight, that are not expressing their concerns and lack of enthusiasm, because they still exist. And I don't want any voices to be lost in this, even though, as Jackie mentioned, the support is here and like, you know, I'm all in. I just want us to make sure that when we're sharing information, that we're sharing it so that people who don't understand can learn and truly know how beneficial this is for our students.
That we're sharing it accurately, not just what's going well. I just want to be real clear at the ending point.
Because the ending point was so uplifting.
Yeah. The reality.
Well, the reality is this. I want to thank the board superintendent and Greg and Lori and our administrative staff for sitting down and working collaboratively. I thank Jackie for moving us up so the teachers could go home and raise some blood. But I will say that the insinuation that we would share only happy things and not regret things is somewhat significant. And the implication that a collaboration between administration and faculty is any more PR is concerning. And let me just finish real quick.
Okay, then I will give a break.
And then, this is, because I don't want to have us, this is not about community. And to be honest with all due respect, it's not about the seven of you. The teachers are here for the students. The administration is who we work with daily. The day-to-day can never be shared out day-to-day. There will be summaries, that's all we can do. We can keep bringing back timelines and more accurate summaries, but that is what we can do because the database is not going to explain that people weren't doing the day-to-day. But we're here for the students. That's what we're here for.
And Sheila, I would just like to say the comments that you just referenced had to do with board superintendent agreements and the board's relationship with its one employee and how we interact with the administration. And that is the relationship that I was talking about and referencing in terms of communication and ensuring that we get the full picture, because there are numerous examples. And this is one where, while you all, as I said, have been aware of what's going on, when we find out about certain things and having to dig is not allowing us to do the work and the job that we were elected to do. So, that has nothing to do with our feelings about the teacher-administration relationship or how you view our work. I just want to be clear about that. That was a comment made about board agreements with our superintendent and how we interact with the administration. And to the point of spin, that also had nothing to do with administration, teacher. I'm not, I never even said the word teacher. But once again, about the agreements that have been made between this board and our one employee and the expectations that we have made around how we communicate and how we represent this district to our broader community. And I can say unequivocally that your statement about you care about your work for our students, that's why everybody's here. We are not catered to anyone other than the best needs of our students. So, let's all be clear that we are working on the same team in that regard. There is no doubt about that.
I just want to close by saying just one thing very quickly here, and that is that I hear very clearly from the board, I hear from the public comments, a need to strike a balance between the communications that we're getting relative to a specific timeline and the regular updates we have, along with the need to internally do this really, really important work. There is an element of learning that has to go on in organizations, do this work productively, and that work, by definition, in order to go well. Teachers have to feel safe to be vulnerable. Administrators have to feel safe to be vulnerable, to get in, challenge themselves, do the hard work, not only of self-improvement as an educator, but the actual tactical work of curriculum improvement, the systemic work of the professional development systems, the multi-chair systems of support systems, and all those things. In order to work on that, we need that time. So, when we take a look at the timelines that we've had up until this point, I hear a lot of clear that there's a need for more communication as we move through there. When we talk about go time from August, getting our teams together in September, and now February, you know, six months away, five months from that point, we've learned a lot as an organization. We've learned a lot that we didn't know in August as an organization. We're bringing that learning to you all right now. And as we move forward, we're going to take that learning to repel that specific timeline. And so, I just want to be clear that no work like this is done, you know, merely as a tactical thing. It's an ongoing adaptive learning work. And I know you all appreciate that, but it's on that note that I want to put this all out there, because adult learning and student learning, after all, are very similar processes, and we're going through that as an organization.
And when you want something to be sustainable and done with fidelity, you have to be able to take the time to learn and then to be able to implement. I do want to go back to the reporting. You know, we report on the strategic plan routinely, and this is a portion of the strategic plan. And in that plan, it talks about the barriers that we face in implementation. So, I want to say that, because we're also reporting the strategic plan to them, which means you'll hear about this again. So, to report out routinely, and yes, I hear everything that you said about if there are barriers and challenges, you need to hear that. But the reporting has to be, as Greg indicated, and Sheila, when there are chunks of time to get the work done and then be able to look back and see what's working and what's not working well. I understand the concern over the fact that the board believes that we could have brought this forward sooner. We were still working through the challenges and the processes, and when it finally got to the point that, whoa, we need to stop, we did come forward. To have come at varying points in time when we didn't have all of the information and the data collected, we would have given you what you said today that you really didn't get, and that's not enough information. John Duffy said, I think in the first public meeting, that as educators, when you find that you are bumping into a wall, you take a step back and you regroup, and you bring it, well, kind of paraphrasing what he said. And so, that's basically what we've done. We've taken a step back, and we're regrouping. We truly appreciate the support that the community has offered. We truly appreciate, I can't say to you as the superintendent how much I appreciate to have a whole board supporting an initiative such as this, because that is rare. So, I want to say that. But know that we are working to get it done. We heard and we hear you about the communication aspect, and we will address that. I just wanted to say that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. I think I take a five-minute break because my back...